All right, I just want to welcome everybody to our October regular board meeting. As you can see, we've got a lot of guests with us tonight. We're going to get through a couple of things here. And then we're going to have a wonderful performance. I'm really, really excited about this. First, we're going to start with the roll call. Kinsey?
Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Leighton Warren?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Here.
Okay, all board members are present. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation's Constitution, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just for all.
I gotta say, that is the best pledge I have ever heard in my six and a half years on this school board. You guys need to come every week, or every month, so you're very, very welcome. The next is our mission statement, and James is going to read that.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. And the next is our land acknowledgement statement, and I'll read that. We, the members of the Green Bay area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk Nations and the current homeland of Omnida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. And finally, we're on to, under open forum with, we're under recognition tonight. We want to welcome the Webster Elementary School. And we have a whole bunch of talented students here. Do you want to go ahead?
Yes, when I, when I, Dr. Tiller, your superintendent, when I was via Webster, I saw such a wonderful, wonderful group of students and a wonderful group of staff and phenomenal interim principal that you got there. I thought to myself, I said, hmm, self, why don't I invite this wonderful group of students to showcase their talents? And they put this together in only two weeks. So without further ado, I am so proud of each and every one of you. I said to my board president, this is how you pack a board meeting with positivity, to be positive for a change and to see this positive. So I'm so glad to see the parents back there. I went back there and greeted, thank you for coming. That's what we need, we need your support. And now, without further ado, the wonderful, wonderful Webster Elementary.
Can we have the principal wave his, their hand? Oh, there, sorry, I didn't see you standing over there, all right. Yeah. Okay, welcome. All right, go ahead, guys.
We are going to begin with Webster portrait, some of the piano students playing an ensemble called The Dance Game.
If any of the parents of these children are in the, can you just wave your hands, please? There we go, there we go. Thank you.
But we know music is powerful, we know art is powerful, we know both things are healing. We know they can change the trajectory of a person's life. And we know, just like sports, music is something, art is something that will keep your kids in school. We know it, we know it's important, and we hope you feel the love and energy from these kids in this class. Say one more thing. They started rehearsing this last Monday, and the violins got their music on Wednesday.
Wow. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Did you want to say something? Yes, absolutely, James, go ahead.
Before you leave, I have a couple of things to say. One, I parented a student from the fourth grade through 12th grade. He was an upright bass player. So I absolutely agree with you that around the ninth grade, he would have admitted that he needed some direction. And I got a call from him today, and he is a kindergarten music teacher. He went on to college. And second thing I'll say is, having parented someone through elementary, middle, and high school music, the violin section can be compared to some seventh and eighth grade violin sections that I've heard. That was fantastic.
Go ahead, go with Dr. Tiller.
I want to say, you know, I get a little emotional, but I just love it. And you, you have a superintendent here that gets emotional when I see what this is what it's about. People don't understand, this is what it's truly about. And we get up every morning and we make sure that we are about children. And this is what it's truly about. I make all decisions that are in the best interest of the masses of the children. So I want to thank you from the bottom, middle, and top of my heart. I'm trying to, I'm trying to hold it back as much as I can, but thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reminding us, thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
See, right when I had the mic, he's got it right there.
Go ahead, Brian.
Is there a list, or do you have any upcoming performances? I know we get reminders of it that anyone in the public would know about any concerts that you have coming up, or can you get that to us, and we'll make sure it's shared?
Thank you. Dr. Tiller and I went to a musical at your school this last summer. It was just amazing and wonderful with like two weeks of rehearsal. I, it was really shocking. I met some of you who were in it, so, yeah, so, okay. Thank you again for coming out on a dark night to play music for us and to remind us, to remind us, so, thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, I don't know if it takes emotion or not, but in interest of the other people speaking, can we just break for two minutes until they go? So the people who are speaking have an audience that's also listening, so while they pack up, just take a break for two to three minutes?
Do we all agree? Okay, we're going to take, we're going to take like a three-minute break here, and then we'll, we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. All right, we're going to get going again, guys. Okay, so, boy, it's pretty hard to carry on with the rest of our agenda after that, but we, we must, and we will. So, under our open forum, the next is our intercity student council report. And would you guys please introduce yourselves and go ahead and give your report?
My name is Andres Mora, and I'm currently a junior at Preble High School.
I'm Viva Winkler, I'm a senior at Southwest High School, and I'm the president of Intercity Student Council. We had our October monthly meeting last night, it was very successful, and we decided on our agenda for the quarterly meeting on November 1st. Some good news over at West. Their Asian club has been fundraising for materials for their club by selling egg rolls, and it's been very successful. Their basketball season has started for both boys and girls. Student Council is sponsoring a Halloween spirit competition, and the winners will receive, I think it's Amazon gift cards. And then they also elected their officers for this school year. At Southwest, we won our last football game against East. Varsity volleyball is doing well, they're still continuing on, and our soccer won their last game. Cross-country went to sectionals this past week. Spanish Honor Society will be inducting 17 new members, which is a good amount for us. We selected a date, a venue, and a theme for our senior ball. And juniors are selling Saruji's bars to fundraise for prom.
Over at Preble, we had our homecoming dance along with a very successful homecoming week. Football season ended, and then we had a blood drive that we hosted, we have a very high attendance. And Asian Club is fundraising for gaining the materials and other activities. And Preble hosted this year's Green Bay Marching Band Showcase, which saw all four high schools, and it was a very good show. And then, over at East, we saw the implementation of Smart Passes, which many students feel have a positive opinion on. And then we have Matilda, the musical, in 12 days. And National Honor Society has started fundraising for graduation chords by Son Candy Bars. All right, and then at John Dewey, we had a student town hall, community building activity, which brings people together to help create more student connection in the small school. And our students began constructing their end project, which involved building something as a result of demonstrating all of your learning.
Okay. Did either of you mention how Preble's cross-country teams are both going to state, right? Yeah. Boy, boys and girls, yeah, which is, I think, the first time ever in 38 years. That is a big deal, so, anyway. Thanks, guys. Yeah, all right. And next, under open forum, we have, we have our community open forum. We've got two people who want to speak. If there's anybody else, I'm just going to remind you that you can fill out the form. It looks like this, and it's out there in the hallway, and hand it to Kinsey. First, we're going to have, okay, thank you, we're going to have someone calling in for the first one.
Hello?
Mr. Steyer?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi, can you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, so even maybe a little bit louder if possible.
Well, it's, how's this? Can I talk loud right now? Is this good?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I don't know where you're at right now on, on your agenda. I'm, I'm a city alder for the city of Green Bay since 2012, and Helen Keller School is in my district, Penn. My children both went there, a lot of the neighbor kids went there, that type of thing. So we've known about the school for many years, and I, I understand with budgets, I've dealt with 12 city budgets in my day. I understand the school district needs to go through a lot of things as well. And the talk is that, you know, Tank School and Keller will be closed next June, at least what I've read. So, the building can't talk for itself, I realize that. I think the attendance of the school is down, it might be about at half-capacity. You know, some research on the school that, you know, 46% of the school, the students are either black, Latino, Native American, or Asian. And if you look at the city of Green Bay population with the same groups, it's about less than 12%. So there's some diversity there. You know, and anytime, you know, there was some talk about closing Elmore School last year too, and that's part of my district as well. And they have a very active, a very active parents' association. So I, I've seen, you know, and that's true about a lot of schools. You know, a school many times is the, it's the solid rock of the neighborhood. You know, our, our area, the city, is kind of a quieter area that I think a lot of people forget, kind of that little northwest corner there, west of Military and north of, north of Shawno. So anyway, that, in that area, you have Helen Keller School. That is the main focal building point, a basis for the neighborhood. So I realize you, you folks have to go ahead and talk about your budgets and that, but I, I'm speaking on behalf of the school. That, you know, if there was another way to go about it, that'd be great. I realize that there's a deficit that you have to deal with. I'm going to be doing city budget next week, so I understand all about that. But I'll take questions if need be, but I just wanted to more or less make a statement that, you know, when a school does go out, you know, I know that they're talking about working with Kennedy School, merging that with the two, and Chapel School is actually much closer, but I don't know if that's even a possibility. So, I'm just throwing it out there that I'm concerned a little bit for the neighborhood. You know, I think we're, we're going to lose a solid rock in our neighborhood. And if that's the way it's got to be, I guess that's the way it's got to be. But I'm just speaking on behalf of the building itself, the students, the parents, you know, the folks that have gone here for many, many years. So that's all I have for now.
Okay, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Bye now.
Bye-bye.
Okay, our second person is Mary Lou Yang. If you could state your, your, your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Lou Yang, I live at 364 Liverance Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Today, I'll be sharing some insight gathered from the AAPI Against Bullying event on Saturday, October 7th. Back in August 28th, I had mentioned that, that we'll be hosting an event regarding that. But at that event, over half of the audience were students and had raised their hands when asked if they had been bullied. It was shocking to see that almost all of their hands were raised, but this led to a deeper question on why they were being bullied and why this was the first time even their parents even heard of this. Many harassment cases are left unreported by Asian students due to insecurities and feeling disregarded. These insecurities come from a place of feeling like a foreigner, feeling like they don't belong, defenseless, and unsure who they could turn to as an ally. For the AAPI Against Bullying event, this event isn't just saying that Asian students are getting bullied, this is actually having the Asian students champion that they are against bullies, and they wanted, they want to, they want to stop the bullying behavior. Okay, so, the AAPI Against Bullying event, even, there was a parent that actually submitted a child's testimony for, on the child's behalf of his traumatic experience with bullying and harassment that happened in one of the Green Bay schools. One comment he made that haunts me was when he said, he quote-unquote, "didn't snitch" because they were white, and I was afraid of getting into more trouble. To give a better idea of this child's case, he was repetitively bullied two years in a row until his parents moved him to another school. He felt like his side of the story wasn't going to be heard, so he chose not to report it. Not only that, but when he was asked if he felt this way only towards the white staff, he said no. Not only that, but when he was asked if he felt this way only towards the white staff, he said no. He felt this way towards all the school staff. This child's story was an awful story to come to light, but this was his experience, his reality as a child. He didn't have any trusted adults who looked like him in the schools. He didn't trust the current system in place to understand someone like him, partially because he didn't get the opportunity to feel included in the history books that were taught. This made him feel disregarded, invalid, unseen, misplaced. To curb this perception, it's time the Green Bay Area Public Schools add the Mo- add a MoLeas on our family engagement coordinator to their equity team. There is currently four family engagement coordinators, but none of them are which specifically for the Asian or Moong population that we have in our district. It's unrealistic to ask to have a few Asian-American professional, Pacific Island professionals in all forty-two schools who will engage with students and parents on a regular basis. But if the school board considers a Moong liaison position, who will have the ability to meet with students and build positive relationships with students, with parents, staff, and the community? I don't believe this is too much to ask for. This will be the supports kids and parents have been needing. Having a designated person in this position not only will increase parent engagement and communication, but this will allow students to understand that their parents are able to access direct resources without barriers. And when I say barriers, there are still language barriers, there's still communication barriers, generational barriers, and support them through through this individual. That would be that that bridge. So, I urge the school, the school board members to highly consider having a specific family engagement coordinator or liaison specifically for the Moong population, because there is quite a large amount there, that there are still families in need, and an interpreter does not meet these needs. We need more than someone who can translate information. We need someone who is willing to build relationships with students and parents. And sending out communication via email or letters are not forms of communication that are effective. We really need a person that would actually reach out to families and say, hey, bring little Johnny over to Langlade. We're having a bingo night. Bring the brothers and sisters. Really bridge that communication, so that way parents, the parents can cross that path of having this home life and school life all being one, so the child can actually communicate with the parents effectively when there's something going on at school and not have to suffer alone when they don't have anybody at school they can go to. But that's all I have today, is really encouraging the school to really consider having somebody who can help bridge this gap for the students, the parents, the staff, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda approval. Could someone please read that motion? No, that's all I have. I just have the two. Anybody? Okay.
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Go ahead, Lynn.
How does one pull one from one of the items from this? Does that happen now?
Yes, you would ask to have an item withdrawn.
I would like to have D pulled for for discussion.
Okay. Boy, that's been a while since we've had that happen. Can we vote then on the remaining? I guess we have to vote on whether or not it's okay to do that.
And Lynn, I'm happy to remove my or to withdraw my motion on this. Is there concern with that or did you just wanna speak of the gifts? Because if you wanna speak of the gifts, we can do that right now, because it's a discussion item. But if you want to pull it and discuss something, we can do it either way. So, were you just, did you wanna mention some stuff that was in it?
I just wanted to speak to it in general.
Then then you can go ahead and do that now. Yeah, we don't have to make a separate vote on it.
Okay, I just wanted to call it to everybody's attention, because I don't know if you folks take it for granted. I did, because it was part of the consent agenda. I didn't pay much attention to it. And last month, I looked at it. I mean, I really looked at it and I read it. And I said, oh, my goodness. Do you know, for example, that there was a family who lost a loved one who taught at Washington Middle School, I believe, for thirty years? And the family asked at his funeral, in lieu of flowers, to please give backpacks to the children of Washington Middle School. And this month I opened it and it's a whole different list of individuals and organizations, a Girl Scout troop, who have given to our schools. And I just, I was afraid that maybe this is all being taken for granted. I'm assuming that someone on the staff is thanking these people. But I think the community needs to know of the generosity. It's just amazing and I'm so grateful for it and I just wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you. I think that reminding, you're right, I think we often do gloss over that, but every month, there's a list of people who generously give to our district. And thank you for reminding us to take a moment and acknowledge that. I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the items under the consent agenda? Go ahead, Andrew.
So, although it wasn't necessary here, because it's just speaking to something on there and no one feels the need for a separate vote, myself included. I believe the understanding when we created these consent agendas, and again, maybe shame on me for having it be an understanding at the time instead of in writing. But was that one, any one board member could pull anything out of the consent agenda, otherwise I would have voted against creating it in the first place. So, not that it needed to happen today, but I believe that the understanding is one board member can request it be removed. Oh, okay.
Yep. Yeah, item four allows that to happen.
Right, but on the, not by a motion, but on a request of one person. Yeah, right. Okay, just making sure.
Yeah. Okay, any anybody else want to speak to any of these items? Okay, Kinsey?
Line voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next on our agenda is a legislative update and that is Lynn Gillick.
Okay, it's it's long and I I promised not to read it all to you, but I do think that there are some things that I'd like to call to your attention. So, this time I numbered them, so it's easier to talk about them. So, you see that the first one is about the USDA changing the percentage required for the child nutrition program. I don't think that influence, that affects our district at all. We have a lot more children than that who are eligible for reduced and free lunch. Assembly Bill three seventy-seven, we have been watching this for a while now. This is the one that want, if it's passed, we will have to designate our athletic sport and sports teams as either male or female. And that, as you can see, has now been moved to the Committee on Mental Health, Substance Abuse Prevention, Children and Families. Just to, I don't know if you realize, we do have at least one coed varsity sport in our high, in our schools and particularly in our high schools, and that is wrestling. That would definitely be affected. I made note that there's a Speaker's Task Force on truancy. That's all I know about it. Number four, the Driver Education Grant Program, Assembly Bill three ninety-four. This simply states if it's passed, that the Department of Transportation will have to have a grant program so that anyone under twenty who's taking driver's ed can apply for a grant and anyone who provides driver's ed programs to people under twenty can apply for a grant. And that has passed by the Assembly. Senate Bill five oh six, I think, is very interesting. This is brand new. It was just read for the first time on October sixteenth. Proposing the reimbursement rate for special education be raised for school districts, independent charter schools ceases and CCBEDs from thirty-three point three percent to ninety percent of eligible rate, beginning with the current school year. So, we'll see how that goes. Number seven, Assembly Bill four ninety-nine, I thought this was very interesting, because I didn't know that in two thousand eleven, they repealed the freedom to go into high schools during the school year and register voters there. And so, what this bill is asking is that this be reinstated so that people like the League of Women Voters and COVO and folks like that will be able to go in, make appointments and make arrangements to go into high schools from time to time and register staff and students. And remember that a student who is going to be eighteen by the next election is eligible to be registered to vote. Number eight, DPI has reported now on what the change in equal equalized aid is for each district. And I'm just mentioning that to you. I saw the whole list and you probably did too. It states here what our change was and and I just threw in a few others from northeast Wisconsin, in case you're interested to see how they compare. I wouldn't know what the significance of it is, why some went up and some went down. And then number nine, I think, this is the one I'd like to spend a few minutes on. I thought this was very interesting. I don't know if you're aware of the lawsuit that was filed on October twelfth in the Supreme Court of Wisconsin. And it alleges that there are four programs in Wisconsin that are violating the Wisconsin Constitution. And they are the Milwaukee Parental Choice Program, the Independent Charter School Program, the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program, and the Special Need Scholarship Program. And they say that these are violating our constitution in three ways. The first is violating the public purpose statement of the Constitution, which says that public funds can be used only for public purposes. And the second one is that it is violating the Uniform Taxation Clause, which states that the rule of taxation shall be uniform and you cannot compel one school district to levy and collect tax for the direct benefit of other school districts. The third, the third one is that it violates the Superintendent Supervision Clause of the Constitution, which says that if you use public monies to support schools, those schools must be under the supervision of the superintendent of schools. And then there's a fourth one, and that is it says that the legislature's imposed revenue limit violates the Uniform Taxation Clause because the state, essentially the state cannot tell school districts what to raise taxes for or how to use the taxes that are raised. So, I have given you a quick little summary here. And then I've given you a little synopsis of each of the four counts. I found it absolutely fascinating. I have no idea what will happen with this. But at the very end is a link to the full document. I thought it was probably the most interesting lawsuit that I've ever read, not that I've read a lot of them, but I thought that every sentence was relevant to our district. I would urge you to read it. If not, take a look at the summaries and as I said, we'll see where it goes. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you. Brian? Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. This is very thorough. I did wanna just go back to number six. I think that got lost a little bit in the going through the list. Unless I zoned out.
Yes, thank you. That number, number six, Assembly Bill five oh one, I forgot to mention that. This is simply adding some language to the non-discrimination proposal. They're they're suggesting that in addition to saying sex or sexual orientation, you should also say gender identity or gender expression. Thank you for that, Laura.
Brian?
I had two points on this. The first one, we have a lot of coed sports in just the way that kind of Title IX works out and different opportunities. So, our student athletes have opportunities to participate in numerous ones. So, I know wrestling was mentioned, but football's available. I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. So, let's why I share that part. And then while I was doing some training with WASPA on here, I saw there was a resolution that was passed by two of our board members, among five others, in two thousand seventeen that ties into the court case that we passed with Mr. Becker and Ms. McCoy. The Board of Education levied one point two million dollars to cover voucher payments in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two point six million dollars in two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. And this year, I believe it was eleven million?
Eleven million.
So, ten times in five years, part of that going to what we discussed earlier, the thirty percent increase in the state budget for levy or for vouchers, but it'll be interesting to see if other school boards pass resolutions that were similar to this or what's coming down the pike regarding that lawsuit. But I just thought it was interesting that our board supported the Wisconsin Voucher Transparency Bill, which I don't know if that passed or not, but to see the increase from two thousand sixteen to now of almost ten times as much. So, interesting facts out there if anyone wants to find out more.
During our budget discussion, to find out that that money going to one, just one charter that does not have an elected board. I don't even know if you can go to their their meetings if they're public to see, you know, how they operate. That's our, that's our tax dollars going to, you know, to an entity that has almost no oversight. So, okay, any other questions? Thank you, Lynn. Okay, next is a referendum update and that's Josh. You're usually the my favorite thing on the agenda, Josh, on these updates, but tonight, I'm sorry, you're a distant second after the performance from the Webster Kids. Oh, you, 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 you guys can work that out. Alright.
Well, and I do give these updates every time you meet. It is kind of that time of the year where constructions, activities are not really very productive. However, there are a couple of exciting updates. The the turf is starting to go in on the baseball field over at Southwest. If you head over there, you can see most of the infield, all the outfield is in. Probably not a work, lot of work happening this week because of the rain that's expected. And the softball softball field will follow immediately after the baseball field turf gets down. You'll also, if you, if you swing out there, you're able to see dugouts. You're starting to see where the the bullpens, batting cages are and stuff like that. So, it is really taking shape out there. Both the Preble and West Auditorium projects are at the point now where we're picking out colors and things like that. So, it's getting very, very close to getting out to bid. The, the renovations at East are currently out for bid. That includes a little bit of refreshing the auditorium there, some a new weight room addition and some locker room, some locker room improvements. So, those, those are all moving around, moving forward. You'll be seeing you'd be seeing all three of those projects come to the board for approval of the general contractor, I would say, within the next thirty to sixty days.
Okay. I just wanna give a shout out to Lori Blakesley and her department for, you know, putting so much good information on on just our Facebook feed as far as, you know, the view of this work and the progress that's being made every day on it. So, it's just a good way for the public to see that progress literally is being made on a daily basis. So.
Yeah, and I forgot to mention, there is a groundbreaking officially on October first at two o'clock at West High School for the weight room expansion, locker room improvements. The gym's getting spruced up a little bit too. They're getting bleachers as part of that project. So, hope to see you all there.
Did you say November first?
November first at two o'clock.
Okay, very good. Okay, any questions? Anybody? Someone might be heckling you. I don't know.
It's one o'clock. November first at one o'clock.
Okay, alright, thanks, Josh. Alright, next on the agenda is the course adoption, coursebook adoption. Would someone like to read that motion, please? Go ahead.
I move that the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five coursebooks as presented be approved.
I move that the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five coursebooks as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or any discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
Just in general, once again, it's amazing to see the opportunities that we provide for our students. Through our forty-two schools and our eighteen thousand students. I think we're second to none to any schools in the area as far as the opportunities that we have, the courses they can take, the breadth of it, and I think this is just a fine example of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Um, next is the final budget adoption. Uh, would someone please read that motion?
I move that the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final budget as presented be approved.
Second.
All right, any questions, any discussion? Just want to reiterate that you can go and look at the budget, um, the budget book online. It's attached to our agenda tonight. I really recommend doing that. I learned a lot myself. Um, and it's just, it's very well done, very, very easily um, digested, like I said before. So go ahead, Lynn.
I just want to add to that, Laura, um, because everybody knows budgeting is the hardest thing for me. And I read that book too, and it makes sense to me. Thank you, ma'am. You did a real, if you can teach me about budgeting, you've done a good job.
Yeah, it really, it really was really well done. So, anybody else? This is kind of a big vote. Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is um, the final levy certification. Would someone please read the motion? Go ahead, James.
I move that the levy of one hundred and nine million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars as presented be approved.
Second.
Right. We've had discussions about these items already, but i- if anyone has more questions or needs to discuss it further now would be your last chance. So go ahead, Andrew.
So um. I just want to make it clear that in voting for this, I have um. Always, uh, despite being a strong supporter and fighting against um. Budget cuts I thought were not necessary. I've always been very careful about the, the mill rate. And generally speaking, have not had almost any situations where I had, where there was an increase in the mill rate that was presented to be voted on. Um, here we do have a very small mill rate increase over last time. However. It's because uh, in large, large measure, because I believe the last adjustment from the state. Didn't have a corresponding offsetting um, state funding. So I believe this is um. You know, this is pretty much a wash. Yes, obviously. Uh, a mill rate that's the same or or close to the same. Uh, yes, it does cost more if property value. Increases, but that's um, you know, that's part of uh, that's just what's happening with inflation. I think it's a. A reasonable mill rate that I'm, I'm still near a historic low mill rate for us that I am um. I'm comfortable with uh, supporting.
Anybody else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is the school security drills. Would someone read the motion, please?
I move that pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section one one eight point zero seven. For CP, the written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
So I read this and I, I don't understand. Does this mean we're placing it on file? And is it, do we get this every time there is a drill? I just can somebody give me a little background, help me understand?
I can, I can do that. So it's statute that they have to evidence the fact that they've carried out the drills. So we as a board are accepting this as evidence that these bill drills took place. Here are the notes and here's the outcomes. That's all.
A follow-up question. Does somebody read those notes and take action on them then? Not us, but somebody does.
Yes, we do. We have our security uh, Chris, so we look at that very closely.
Andrew.
I think part of the point is to have board oversight. So if we, if we looked at it and were concerned, then we could bring it up, which would be a closed session because of not discussing security measures publicly, but we, we could. Um, we have not so far had to, to do so. I think it's, we get a very good comprehensive report on, on the drills.
Yeah. Okay, Brian.
I just want clarification and I know my fellow board members have also looked at it. So when someone stated, if we looked at it, we look at it when it comes out, but there's not any changes and it's not available to the public because of security concerns. So just clarification on that.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, the next is um, we're going to be voting on the Advisory Committee on Clean Energy Charter Approval. Um, we currently have a draft that um, Lynn and a few other people had some input in and and the board has had a chance to review it and um. This committee is going to be um, taking on a new role, an advisory role. And uh, it'll be a standing committee. So um, go ahead, Brian.
Just for ease of everyone involved, if I could just make a suggestion that if we're making any amendments to this, we look at the line number. And vote each amendment as we come through. That way we've got a working document that's up on the screen. Um, Kinsey can produce while we go through and we see it. So.
Okay.
If that's fine with.
I know a few people have some um, some changes that they are going to be proposing. So thank you. Um. I um, Brian, I know you have some, so why don't you go ahead and start it? Yeah. Do we need a motion for this?
What I was going to propose is that we make a motion for each change, then we can vote on the final one at the end. Would that be part of the procedure? Yeah, okay. Okay, I move that we approve um. The Advisory Committee on Clean Energy Charter as approved. We can't do that because if we're going to have changes, we've got to change it as each one goes through.
Well, no, but you, you move it and then you do amendments to the motion. And then you have a final vote on the motion, which may or may not be amended at that time. Yeah.
Okay, so someone read the motion.
Well, Brian did. I'll second. Brian did.
Okay, all right. So um, now we can go ahead and propose changes. Minutes. Go ahead, Brian.
I'd like to amend the motion I just made um, and. Make amendment to line twenty-seven under membership. Where it states uh, attend and participate. I'd like to add initial membership. Will allow delegates to choose between a one or two-year term with it evenly split. Twenty-seven, at the end of line twenty-seven.
Okay.
Initial membership.
Um, so start, so memberships, it's, so the sentence is, membership will also include.
Yep.
One non-voting staff member as pointed, okay, so keep reading.
At the conclusion of that, so.
Is it a separate, a new sentence? Okay.
Yep. Initial membership will allow delegates to choose between a one or two-year term. With it split evenly.
So when, when you mean split evenly, what does that, can you?
So we have half of it at one-year term and half of it is a second-year term. So we're not having a flip of the, we don't lose the whole committee.
Um, what if you can't find a consensus in the, in the group that's been chosen as to? Wow, any discussion? Go ahead, Lynn.
I would just take off the end part of that, that it has to be even. I think that's too, that's unrealistic. I think this is a very good uh, change. I. The initial membership will uh, so to the, to the extent possible or something like that, be split between one-year term and two-year term.
Go ahead.
I get it. My concern is that if we still have one-third of it, that's a one-year term and two-thirds, we're still going to run into the same thing where we're going to lose a majority of it. So looking at the. We don't, we don't want to lose the majority of it on either one of those two years. So that's my intent with having it split down the middle. So.
Okay, go ahead, James.
Brian, would you be okay with changing the consensus of choosing to being assigned to? Uh, so that way whoever's responsible can assign one and two, just to make sure that, I agree with you. I don't think we want the whole team to turn over.
I will accept that as a friendly.
Okay. So someone help out Kinsey as to what that's going to look. Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, well, this is getting written up. I think in reality, you know, if we split between one and two, a lot of members um. Maybe we'll, whether the one year or the two, hopefully will, it'll be going well and they will want to continue and so many will continue, but maybe a student member or. Or just someone, you know, people move. So there'll be, you know, sometimes it'll be need to be off-cycle replacements as, as well.
Okay.
But I, I support the amendment to split the, the one and two-year. Do you say evenly or just distributed? Because there could be an odd number.
Okay, all right. Does everyone like the way that reads? Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Do we need to determine how they'll be identified? Can we say randomly or? You know, which, whether they get the one or two-year terms?
That's kind of.
Randomly assigned, just so it's not.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, this first initial group is going to be, there'll be a lot of testing going on here since it's a brand-new committee and I um. You know, everyone is just going to have to stay open, I think, as we, as we figure this out and get everybody settled. Go ahead, Andrew.
So I'm. I'm okay with this, but I hope, I hope common sense would dictate that if someone. Wished to be a one-year, that they could just do it and then there wouldn't have to be, right? I mean um. But I don't, I don't feel the need to. Take out the word randomly and in debate, but I would, I hope there's some, some common sense would prevail.
Okay. Go ahead, Laura. Oh, I'll second it. Okay, Laura?
In the application, we could put willing to serve a one-to-two-year term to be determined, but just so they know that that option is out there when they apply, that it could be a one-year or two-year.
That, so they should, in their application, they could have a preference?
If we could put that, well, just so that they know that that it may be a one-year or two-year, just on the application.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
I would like to have randomly stricken, Lynn.
Okay. So somewhere um, under, let's see, application. Do we have to add? Okay, should we vote on this first? Okay. Um, can we just do an all in favor? Or do we have to do an actual vote?
Well, I, I would call for a roll call. I mean, it's a, I, I don't want to get into the habit of just, you know, voice, I mean, roll call, voice roll call is fine.
Kinsey, are you able? Okay, let's do that then. Let's do a, a roll call. Gerlach?
Yes.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Lierley?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Mills? Motion carries. Okay. All right. Um, anybody else? Um, Andrew, you go ahead.
Um, I would like to move to amend the motion by changing the numbers nine and eleven. Uh, to say no, no fewer than ten and no more than fifteen. Twenty-three?
What?
Twenty-three. Um, no, no fewer than ten and no more than fifteen. And then I'll speak to that after the second.
Second.
Go ahead.
So I am. I, I think it's, I think it's important to have a good, a good mix of representation on, on the committee, and I'm concerned about getting that at. Um, if we have a, a cap at eleven, um, I think ten to fifteen gives a little more room to work with. I do feel. I do feel very strongly that there need to be two students on all these committees. However. I am willing to try for these first two meetings. Not necessarily forcing it. But I think it would be very, it would be harder to put two students on a committee. If it was limited to a cap of, of eleven, where I think if there's a little bit more room to work with. So if the, if the ten to fifteen passes. I don't feel a need this time to make a motion to specifically say uh, two student members. Um, however, I will vote no on a membership list if it does not contain two or more student members.
Go ahead, Viva.
I just have a quick question. I know at the last board meeting, um, there had been talked about um, just having it like an application open to anybody, whether they're a student or in a, like adults from the community. Um, was there any more conversation on that kind of advertising this to students as well as community members?
Oh, I'll second that. Oh, Laura, I'm sorry, Laura already did, right? You're right. Um. Um, can I, I, I don't, not that I'm aware of, but maybe someone else. Brian, did you, are you aware of, uh, for the discussion?
I'm going to guess we haven't advertised because we haven't approved it yet, but I'm going to guarantee that, that we will promote this to. As an individual, look, and looking at this, that there can be encouragement from board members that we will definitely do so. Did that answer your question or no?
It, go ahead and finish your thought.
That was the final thought. I was just wondering, like. Like I said, like at the last board meeting, there was talk of like advertising it to students and I just wanted to make sure that that was like still in the plans.
I, I, I can only speak for myself and that I want to have student representation on this committee. And I'm perfectly fine with two. If, especially if the numbers are bigger. So, but that's, I'm only speaking for myself now. So go ahead, Ryan. Okay, Andrew, did you have, did you raise your hand?
I did. I guess I went first. So I don't know who, um. I mean. I don't, I don't really have, I mean, I said, I guess I would have to, to say.
Okay, so let's address the, the, what, the motion that you made, Andrew. Um. What, I'm sorry, which line was that, okay, yeah, so, um, no fewer than ten and no more than fifteen. And that's been, uh, that's a motion that's been seconded. Brian?
Yeah, I would fully support including student personnel or student representatives on this, I understand your concern with it, Andrew. I think it's important, especially on this one, that we have students represented on it and having a seat at the table. I appreciate the motion with the increase in the numbers, so that can be in there, but. I would be in favor of the idea of having two student memberships on that, so.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Uh, as the author of the charter, um, I did work with one of the, um, authors of the original resolution. Of course, that was several years ago, I wasn't on the board when that resolution was brought to you, but, um, it was. I, I don't wanna speak for Ned. But I, I do feel that in the drafting of this, as we worked together, my feeling was. Uh, and we talked about, um, uh, you know. As a side item, who do you imagine would be serving on this board or on this, uh, committee? And we envisioned it very much as a committee of experts. Who would be advising a board of non-experts, such as me, who's, has no expertise on clean energy. And the kinds of things that they would be advising on, um, you know, would, would involve. I mean, I, I'm thinking of the, uh, civil engineer that I happen to know who led the cleanup of the Fox River. That's kind of person I envisioned having on this, on this committee. To provide ex, expert advice to the board. In terms of spending millions of dollars. And in terms of reviewing the district wellness policy to, you know, uh, establishment of goals to become carbon neutral. I, I think I can safely speak for Ned Dorf, who helped me write this, that. We both were envisioning this as an, a panel of experts to advise the board.
Go ahead, Viva. Go ahead.
So I understand where you're coming from and that you want, um, experts, I mean, absolutely, like you just want the best. Um, but I do think it is really important that students are involved, whether. It's, it doesn't have to be on the council, but there should be some kind of sub-council, just because these are decisions that are affecting our generation. That are gonna be affecting. I guess us more than you guys, we're gonna be around, this sounds really bad to say, but we're gonna be around for a little bit longer than you.
It's okay for you to say that, don't worry.
Um, so I do think it is important that the student voices are heard, especially on something that is going to affect us so heavily, once you guys have moved on. Um, so if it's not, if we don't have student representation directly on the council, I think it is important that they're involved in some capacity.
I'm hoping that student voice will trigger, um, the adults and urge them on to. Think in ways that maybe they wouldn't, um, and I, that's how I envision that student voice and also. It's just a really good learning experience too, for everybody, so, um, go ahead, Andrew.
So I, I think we should, from a technical perspective. We can take care of the ten to, if we take care of the ten to fifteen first, and then as an aside. The committee that once would have been limited to nine or eleven people. And might have been all adults and experts in their field. Now the two students could be added under ten to fifteen, but we should do the. There could be room for motion to say, including at least two students, but let's, um, just, I think. It's germane to just do, do this motion first and then take another.
So let's address this emotion, um, is there any other discussion regarding it? Okay, Kinsey? Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so are we going to go ahead and add that, that, the? Well, does someone wanna make that motion, go ahead, Brian?
I move that we add to section. Twenty-three at the, after fifteen. With a comma. After individuals, thank you, Andrew. Two students shall be included. At least two.
Second.
Okay, got it, motion and a second, go ahead, Brian.
Recognizing where Andrew's going with this, um, I wanted to open up the floor for discussion on it. And I'm willing to remove the motion at some point if. Influenced by it, but I think every board member should be able to speak to this if they have an interest on it before we call a vote.
Okay, I just, I mean, this is, this is our first shot at this, this is a new, you know, there might be. Um, opportunity down the road to change, if change is needed, it's just, it's so brand new and we're still kind of figuring it out, so. This, whatever we decide tonight and vote on tonight is not, you know, that's not it forever, it's, um, it can be changed and. And amended at a later date. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was okay with this, um, in, informally, but. I certainly, I certainly support it and it will. Help prevent me from having to potentially face a, although I, I think the list would have probably come through with students on it, whether we put this or not. I think it's important to have students on committees. And I think as soon as we say we'll have a, a subcommittee for students, although that could still happen alongside of it. The moment you do that, the student input is less than, it is different, it is other. It is separate, we've had, and we've had committees with, dealing with complicated stuff that have, has a start time. Start time got very intricate, grading policy got very much into the nitty gritty and the student representatives were very. Involved with it, and I think there is, um, there's an important. Element to having, having students who are. In these buildings, right, so we're gonna be discussing things like, like lighting, and over the years at, at times, I don't think so, recently. We've heard students talk about, we think you went a little too hard on. Reducing light level to save energy and we had to talk about the lux levels and, and all this. How important is, you know, how important is natural light as we're considering new, new buildings, there's energy advantages, but how important is it to the? And I think having, you know, the, the people who are going to be affected by this are. A, a few thousand staff and twenty thousand students are going to live with the, the impacts of. Of this, so I think the, and it, it's very important for there to be two, because regardless of who the students are. Regardless of how strong of student leaders they are. I've seen this many times, that sometimes you put a single stu, that's, that's why I fought for so long to have there always be, uh, option for two students to be at the table. Uh, for I C S C at the board meeting is because it can be intimidating. No matter how strong the student leader is, it can still be intimidating and so having two is good, it also helps ensure there's at least one student voice if someone can't. So I certainly support.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to share my support for having students on here, um, agree with Lynn about having some expertise knowledge for sure, and I think. The important part about having students on here is that we are helping to develop them, we're helping them build their resume for college or beyond. And to have that voice, and so I think it's, um. Something that's critically important, it's an opportunity for us to develop future leaders, and then also, sometimes there's, I, we have. It's a big district, and so sometimes there are people that may be interested in leadership, but they're not able to be elected at their schools, or I'd like to be able to give other people. Um, an opportunity to serve in this capacity and learn that maybe aren't always in leadership positions or other areas in the district. And maybe this is something up their alley, but they've never been in a position to be able to have that level of, um, learning or leadership.
I'm, I, I mean, I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I can't remember for sure about having maybe a student subcommittee. That's entirely students who can, you know, attend meetings if they want, um, and, uh. You know, have their own kind of governmental, quasi-governmental entity within. Or maybe each school or whatever school, I mean, I feel like there's a lot of potential here for students, um. And, um, it, it's just that we're right at the beginning and it might take a while to figure it out, so, go ahead, Brian.
I agree with making sure that we have student representation on there, and I think it's, with what it's been spoken before, it's also their. Part of our community on here, and as we look at other charters coming in. We're opening it up to a lot of different groups because we want our community represented on these charters. And I fully understand what Lynn is saying as far as making sure experts are there, there will be experts there. But having that voice and that different perspective and that ability for ownership from students being on there, I think is a no brainer, so.
Okay. Alright, anybody else wanna weigh in? Okay, so, go ahead then.
I disagree with all of you, and I will vote no and you will all vote yes, and I'm gonna say this only once because this is going to apply to all these future. On charters that we write, we just, as Laura keeps saying, we just started this, I think this goes back to the other charter that we've been working on too, which is about. Boundaries, uh. Um, and I think that there are two mistakes being made here, one is that I believe you are confusing. Representative body with. Um, expert advisory committee. Um, I, I don't see the need for representation on an expert advisory committee. And the second thing is, I believe, and I said this, um, when we were writing the first charter. And that's why, um, I volunteered to rewrite the membership a little bit, originally. The concept was, well, let's see, let's make sure we have X number of parents and X number of teachers and. Gotta have somebody from the west side and somebody from the east side. And I believe you paint yourself into a corner, when you set up parameters like that in advance, you will have an application process. So let's say, uh, fifty people apply, some students, some, who knows? And then our president and the superintendent look at those applications. And my vision is that they first identify the people qualified to provide the advice. And they pull that, they make a pool of qualified candidates, and then as they look at them, they say, oh, look here. This one's a student, let's make sure we get that one on there, there might be three students or four students. And sometime there might be one student, but you don't wanna put yourself in a position. Of having to go out and recruit somebody and beg somebody who's not qualified or interested. Just because you wrote the charter that way, and I know you say it can be changed in the future, but. I just think that there's a fundamental difference between a representative body. And an advisory committee, and I think you will regret it if you make parameters. That you don't need to, but I will not say it again, no matter how many charters we write.
Alright, um, go ahead.
I think when you have the experts, that is not going to be the only people. That will be talking, they will be talking to, they will go out in the community and find other experts as well to come to the meetings and things. So I think, I think we will get the experts, but I really think in this time with climate change and. Everything that's going on, it is so important that we bring our children, our students along with us.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
I, I just don't see this, so. So the, the solution, if there happened to not be, I mean, there's, there should be consultation with intercity student council. It doesn't mean that the only students, it doesn't mean that would be a requirement for, for membership, but in consultation with intercity student council, there should. Be no trouble finding students who may or may not be, you know, I C S C members. Uh, I, I just don't, we, we would have to have a lot of these committees going before I think we'd have trouble finding. Uh, two students on these committees with, with, not, not just interest, but sincere. Sincere interest, and I think the. History would show on committees like this, granted, the energy one is a, a little bit different in nature, but. Uh, student, student participation has always been not active and thoughtful and. And not window dressing, and I am, I am the first to call out when. I think student leadership is being used as window dressing, um, or when it is. Skipped, uh, against board policy for months and months on end, um. You know, I will call it out and I have called it out, and I think this, I think this will, I don't think there'll be any trouble finding two. Active students who will participate meaningfully and. If I'm still doing this in a year, um, and I'm wrong, I'll, I'll own up to it, but I don't think I am.
Okay, we need to move on, so one more.
Um, base, I think it goes back to what is the purpose, and if we look at our membership qualifications, it doesn't require an expertise in that, so I think that has to be. Updated if in fact we're going to require more expert knowledge than we would, than what we were discussing. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say, not, I think we, we just need to have a committee that is, meets our needs, and I think, um, I still support, I appreciate. And respect Lynn's perspective.
Yes, okay. Alright, um, we're going to, uh, we're about to vote, we have a motion and a second, uh, requiring. Where, where, where is that? Oh, there it is, okay. Okay, alright, so we have a motion and a second, um, we need to vote, so Kinsey? McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Nay.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Okay, um, alright, go ahead, Brian. Keep, go ahead.
Like to amend, uh, what was line twenty-nine, which I believe is now line thirty. Thirty-one, thank you, to add, after president of the school board or delegate board member. Designee board member, thank you.
Second. Discussion? Go ahead.
We put a lot on the plate of the president, and I think this is an opportunity for other board members with the appointment from. The president to help out on some of these committees and just help screen and just spread the workload a bit. Um, I believe this matches with board policy one eighty-five, so it should just be. Pretty straightforward.
And I believe that Melissa's, um, had a chance to chime in on this, so, okay, yes, okay, alright. Um, go ahead, Lynn.
I, I don't recall, um, the decision from legal, this is, this does fit with policy one eighty-five? I thought policy one eighty-five specifically said the president and the superintendent.
I think we might need a. Expert legal advice here. Brian asked me the question last week and I responded that it is in the policy. It indicates that all committees shall be created by a written charter in the policy, no advisory committee, committee charter shall conflict with. Any other advisory committee created in a, to advise the board. Then it indicates that. One second, um, except where a different process is expressly established by applicable legal authority. Board policy or by the board itself, at the time the advisory committee is created. Members of an advisory committee shall be appointed by standard majority vote following nominations of the board president. So in your charter, you can create what that process will look like, and it would be consistent then with the policy because the policy says. Or by the board itself. or by the board itself at the time the advisory committee is created. Okay?
It says after nomination by the board president. And I think what Brian is suggesting is, which I agree with, I, I wish that it had been written differently when we wrote that policy. I think what you're saying, Brian, is nominated by the board president or the, or a board member designated by the board president. The reason that I am belaboring this is that I tried to, when I was helping with the first charter, I tried to put that in, and, and I was advised that that would violate the policy.
Go ahead.
It's my understanding, and Melissa, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, because we're creating this charter that would almost, because it doesn't conflict with the policy, it would give us that opportunity. If there's a hierarchy, this charter would allow us to do that, correct?
I, I think the original language was a little bit different, Lynn, than what Brian is suggesting. This, again, is within B one, which says, or by the board itself at the time the advisory committee is created.
Talking about the part that says after nomination by the president.
Can you point to that language in the policy?
You just read it. It is right after the part. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I think, oops, B one at the end of, the end of the sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Members of the advisory committee shall be appointed by standard majority vote following nomination by the board president. Is that what you're?
But the language in front of it modifies that because it says except where the board itself at the time the advisory committee is created. So that modifies the nomination by the board president. Go ahead, Andrew.
I think we're, we're getting pretty deep into the weeds here on something that would work itself out anyways. Because if, if the board, first of all, the board president wants to do it, the board president gets to do it. If the board president wishes to have another board member do it, whether that is the board member working with the superintendent or whether, right, they would be delegating it for the purpose of getting the list that they, that the board president would likely recommend. So in the end, I don't think there's any rules being broken here. The ultimate thing is that the, so with, although yes, but with, with or without this, the board president could still delegate, and then it would just be a question of technically who was making the appointment in the end.
Go ahead, Brian.
Wouldn't be the appointment, it'd be the nomination because the board would still have the final vote on it. So I think this gives us the opportunity to help the board president. And if you have a strong interest in an area, you express that interest to the board president. The board president will more than likely say, go for it.
I guess I'm gonna keep my, I'm, I'm not gonna speak on this at this point. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Any more discussion about it? All right, Kinsey?
Well.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Could you just read what we're voting on, please?
I've got a good angle of it, if that's all right. Line thirty-one, we're, we're adding or designate board member. It's in purple, thirty-one to thirty-two on the corrected version.
Do, do you think we need to say who does, who does that designation?
I think it's, I think it's a given that it's by the board president's designee.
Okay, all right. Okay, are we good? All right, let's vote. Go ahead, Kinsey.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Okay. All right, guys, let's try to bring this home. Anybody, any?
Point of order, I understand the concern with the time, but like, this is, this is our.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is, this is the work of the body.
I mean, no offense.
I, I get it, but.
Okay, so let's, any additional changes? Go ahead, Brian.
Willing to be flexible on this, I move that on line thirty-eight and thirty-nine be stricken, or I'm sorry, not be stricken, but add resident of the Green Bay area public school district at the conclusion of line thirty-nine under membership qualifications, commitments to the relationship either currently or in the past, and a resident of the Green Bay area public school district.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion, Andrew. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, if you want to speak to it.
I think it's really important that we have residents of the Green Bay area public school district serving on these committees. And this one, I understand some flexibility, but as committees come up and charters come up, I think it's really important that they're district residents.
Okay, go ahead.
I think in this case, you might want expertise, and if it's somebody out of the district, you know, I think that.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay, Andrew.
Yeah, I think on, on this one, certainly, certainly I will want to see that in the, the boundary one. I think it's an absolute must. On this one, I could see there being, you know, if the right, if, if the right expert is nearby and doesn't live in the district, are we going to exclude them? Now, I think, again, I don't, I would be okay with, I would be okay with specifying a quota that some high percentage would have to be district residents if we felt we needed to. But I'm just not worried that that would happen. I, I would certainly vote no if half or more of them were out, out of district residents. But might we need someone with special expertise that's not in the district? I would not want to rule that out by completely barring you from being on if you're not a resident.
Well, then what kind of side rails would you have on that?
Um, I don't, I would, I'm leaning towards not having it, and the side rail being just voting no on the list. In unlikely event, we were presented with a list voted with out of district residents. But I guess seventy-five percent, if we have to do one, but I'd, I'd rather not, I'd rather not do one.
Go ahead, Brian.
Anyone's allowed to come and speak because these are going to be public hearings. Anyone's allowed to come in and share their expertise with it. It could be encouraged by the board or the committee to have an expert come in and share with the committee on it. I, I get the concern on that, but I think it's really important that we have residents as members of these committees, so.
I, I agree that, that the members can invite whoever they want and to bring and report out their area of expertise, even multiple times if necessary. But they can still come and, and talk to the members. So, go ahead.
And I believe these are all following under open records laws anyways, and does that require a public forum section or no? For these meetings?
Okay. So on the invitation of members, they could have any expertise, expert come in and speak, even if it's multiple times. So, okay, go ahead, Andrew.
That, that would prevent, that could prevent that expert from actively working with the committee and being a routine part of it. What, what I'm going to do, I'm going to vote no, and if it fails, I'll make a motion that at least seventy-five percent must be district residents.
Anybody else? Okay. We have, do we have a second on this? Yes, okay. All right, Kinsey?
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Nay.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Nay.
Aye.
Welch?
Nay.
Becker?
Nay.
Motion fails, four to three.
All right, Andrew, do you want to offer your motion? Go ahead.
So I will move that line thirty-nine, we put, I think we'd start a new sentence. So the new sentence would be at least seventy-five percent of committee members must be residents of the district.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Questions? Do you want to speak to it?
Um, I think.
Yeah, I'll read it.
I, I want to, I want to allow for one, if the, if the best, if one of the top experts in clean energy happens to live in Howard, it would be great to have on this. While still making sure that the majority, you know, any votes that are taken will overwhelmingly have committee, district residents in it. I, I think it gives a little flexibility, but not too much to load it up with non-district residents.
Okay. Any, go ahead, Brian.
I may have trouble supporting this because I don't want to set a precedent with other committees that will set some wiggle room with it. Understand the intent, I understand why the previous motion failed on it. But looking at other charters coming up, I think we need to have some sort of consistency with expectations on it.
Maybe this forces us to understand that each of these charters is different and, 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 and suits, you know, serves a different, a different need. So, sorry, I'm starting to be incoherent here. So, um, all right, so any other discussion? All right, Kinsey?
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Nay.
Mills?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
Okay. Any other? Any other amendments? Okay. I think we're finally ready to vote on this in its entirety, so. Unless anyone has anything else, I think we're ready to vote. Go ahead, James.
Through the discussion tonight, I just recognize that the advisory committee on clean energy, because it is so specific and there are experts in the field, we're not sensitive to conflicts of interest in this charter. And I don't, we don't need to do it now, but as we go forward, we need to really be careful because we can't have someone advising us and selling us products all at the same time. So I don't know how to address that in this charter. I don't think we need to because it's advisory and we have smart people involved. But I think it is our responsibility to establish a precedent to make sure that there aren't advisors, actively engaging in conflicts of interest.
Thank you, that's, I think that's very insightful, actually. Go ahead, Brian.
I believe it's addressed under the policy, under limitations, so what would have been lines one oh-four through one twenty-three would cover that.
Say that last part again, that.
It's covered under the limitations under the following district policies and procedures. So what was previously lines one oh-four through one twenty-three would cover that.
So all that, that long list of policies already protects, it already protects us from that? So, okay, but still, it's a good reminder to be, to be aware. So thank you for bringing that up. All right, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey? Oh. Someone make the motion to, go ahead.
I move that the advisory committee on clean energy charter as modified and presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, I did.
I mean, actually, it was already made and seconded, and then you do amendments after it's made and seconded, but.
Okay.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Nay.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one.
Okay. All right, thank you for everyone's patience on that, as it is a new charter. The hammering out some of these details is, is often tedious but necessary, so. All right, we're going to move on then. Next is F, Advisor Committee Charter for the Study of Facilities Master Planning Task Force Recommendations pertaining to Community Impact or of Repurposing Schools to four K eight, eight facilities and Proposed School Boundaries Changes Approval.
I move that the advisory committee charter for the study on the facility master planning task force recommendations pertaining to community impact of repurposing schools for four K through eight facilities and proposed school boundary changes as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. All right, we've been working on this for a long time. The we've had a chance to have the company that we've hired to do this work weigh in. And to offer, there's a, I, I was interested to see the timeline that they have proposed, though it's not written in stone, it's, it's, it's tentative, but it gives you some idea of the scope and what, what the timeline on this is going to be, so. I'm sorry, did someone second? Yes, okay. Questions? Did you want to speak to it?
Sure, there were a couple of changes that were made. I just want to highlight for your attention. Under limitations, there was an additional limitation that was a recommendation by the third party Cooperative Strategies. That is line ninety-four. Committee members will participate in the review and approval of public feedback surveys that will be distributed by the district and/or cooperative strategies to determine public sentiment. It is outside the scope of any individual committee member's role to solicit feedback on behalf of the committee outside of planned engagements. What the, the third party was concerned about was, of course, surveys are, are generated and distributed. There is a methodology that is implemented to try to get to an unbiased or an acceptable response. And they did not envision getting uncontrolled feedback from individual members that may be representative of a specific vocal contingency or population. So they wanted to make sure that if we have a methodology for data, we have a methodology for feedback, that everyone employ that there, so. Before we continue on, and then beyond the timeline, there were just some basic procedures for communicating committee information to the board and public that is new on this version, basically establishing that the cooperative strategies and the designate from the Board of Education, which in this policy was outlined to be the president, but I agree with designate thereof being added. A, if you want to communicate with the public, those are organized engagements. And if you communicate with the Board of Education, it is through a, the representative of the board assigned to the committee, and they will make the determination if any unplanned or additional contacts with the Board of Education in general meeting would be required, right? So they just want to make sure that it was controlled. So those are the primary, and I went through and did a search and replace for vendor or consultant with the appropriately named cooperative strategies, and those are the only changes to the to the charter.
Okay. I don't know who's first. I think Andrew was first. Go ahead, Andrew.
So I don't, I don't like the idea of saying that. So, I don't, I don't like the idea of saying that individual community members can't solicit feedback. Right, now, I, I don't think an individual member's opinion should override the surveys, but unfortunately, we have heard about surveys that our community wasn't, uh, a part of our community, didn't feel included in the survey process. We've heard that surveys were created, in, in one case, a survey was created without an opportunity for comments, and so people didn't feel represented. Um, to, to say that we're gonna have an advisory committee representing different demographics in different parts of the community, and then saying you can't, you know, talk to them, do- doesn't seem to make sense to me. I also think it's on, it's unenforceable, so if it's just, if it's just there as a discourager, that's, that's one thing, but I would imagine we might have people who are on this committee, who are part of an organized community group, and what then? I mean, of, of course, they're going to get the, um, get the feedback. Now, if it's, uh, then I think we get into, okay, so is it, is it soliciting feedback if they're, you know, I don't, I don't know how you would enforce it anyways, and I don't know that we want to tell this committee not to talk to the, not to talk to the community.
And quickly, and i- it may be something that, oh, we can wordsmith, I, I don't know that we need to do it tonight, but the idea was not to prohibit a member to go out and inform themselves of sentiment of the, the, the population that they may be closely aligned to. It's on behalf of the committee, so the, if that committee member has an expectation that that feedback is meaningful into a process, right, and just like the cooperative strategy brings data, and then they go, well, here's my data as well, and therefore it should be an input into the process, that's what they were concerned about, being able to be an informed committee member and to advocate in session for, or, you know, who you've talked to, that's, that's not prohibited, right? That's actually being a valued member of the committee, it's just the expectation that the data asked collected is standardized, you know, and meaningful in its format to be integrated with other data sets, that's, I think, the, the concern.
The data sets aren't the, are we talking about the data sets in earlier lines, like eighty-six through ninety-two? This is about, yeah.
Feedback is qualitative or quantitative data, right? So, you know, whether it's qualitative or what, that, actually, it kind of makes my point, right? So, if we're going to survey for sentiment and feelings on a particular plan, there is a standard way to do that, and it's controlled, and there should be some background involved. Now, it's in there that, unlike and to address your concern, the committee members will be part of the revision and the review of the surveys so that they, if they have a concern with the survey as it's going out, that they have the ability to provide input into the creation, just not act alone without any structure.
Andrew.
I'm, I'm concerned, though, that we're leaning heavily on, we're leaning heavily on one method of getting opinions, so if I'll, I'll, and I'll do it, if no other board member feels that way, I'll, I'll stop because I don't want to take up a lot of time if I'm the only one who thinks that, but I think I, I think we run into problems when we say, but, but we did a survey, oh, and we did a survey, and we did it, we put it out on the website, and, and we did it in three languages, so we must be good. You know, we had, how many did we have actually come back in, in Spanish when we did the last one, not nowhere even close to proportional of, of our district's families.
Brian.
The way I understand this, and James, correct me if I'm, if I'm guiding the wrong way on this, there's opportunities for input on the survey through the committee members, and people can outreach to them to say, this is my question with the draft of the survey, once we're putting the ingredients together and making it. Once it comes out, we don't want committee members taking both sides, like, you should really fill this out more to skew the results. That advertisement should be going out to everyone through the other sources that we have, whether it's our PR department, it's just regular actions with it, but that input should be taken through the committee member while the questions are being formed. Am I correct on that, James, or am I kind of missing it?
Yes, and I, I find myself in the position of speaking for other entities, so I, this is not what I intend to do, but envision the scenario where we go through the process, we create a survey, they had input into the creation of survey, it comes back and says seventy-five percent approve, and then someone stands up and says, I did my own survey, and I think it's only thirty-five percent approve, and how do you reconcile this, too? So it's, it's not being informed, right, and, and participating, having talked to, you know, community members with whom you've gathered information, it's just trying to represent that as legitimate feedback that is, uh, you know, standardized alongside other surveys, so. And, and, but again, I'm speaking for a, a conversation that touched on this, and they made a recommendation.
Go ahead. Okay, I under, I, I share with, um, Andrew the desire to have feedback from a variety of resources, not just surveys, but rereading this again. Um, this is saying the committee members will participate in the review and approval of the public feedback survey, so they're going to approve the survey that will be distributed by the district and/or the consultant to determine public sentiment. So then it is outside of the scope of an individual committee, committee member's role to solicit feedback on behalf of the committee outside of the planned engagement. So I, to me, that could mean, it could mean outside of the survey, but we say plan, I think maybe it needs to be more explicit, because we want our committee members to come with feedback and thoughts.
There are two types of engagements, there's survey engagements, and then there are public, um, interview or public forums, so it, it, that was really the, um, the intent of not just saying survey, but again, we can, we can take amendments to change of language.
Follow-up to that, when, when we have our committee giving, I think, like, community in- input, are we, we're taking, just to clarify, we don't want them to just come in and analyze the surveys and data, where are we al- also taking feedback from them as members of the community as data? Is that correct? Is that what you understand as well?
So, I, I think it is more than just, I think they provide feedback iteratively as proposals are created by cooperative strategies. The committee members are intimately engaged in reviewing those and providing feedback. It's just then turning to the public and soliciting feedback from the public.
Andrew.
I, I think everyone might mean the same thing, however, it is outside the scope of an individual committee's member role to solicit feedback on behalf of the committee outside the planned engagements. That's a separate sentence, and I, I would argue it doesn't matter that the sentence before it happens to be talking about surveys. You know, this, it, with that sentence in there, to me, someone saying that, hey, you know what, just like has happened of other times, despite best efforts, and hey, we ma- we've, I'm not saying we didn't make best efforts, right, but on the very critical issue of those uh, boundaries in closing schools, the Spanish language participation in that survey was, uh, not remotely proportional, so if that occurs, the, a person would be told it's outside of their scope to come back saying, look, I don't think the, uh, I don't think the Spanish-speaking community feels this way, and I've been talking to people, and, and look at the, look at the, the percentages of survey responses are not are not close, and certainly some people who are bilingual just took the sur- I'm not saying no, but certainly something doesn't seem right when such a tiny percentage of people, um, took advantage of filling out the surveys in other languages, and I just, that, that sentence is not altered by the sentence before it is my problem.
So, there's not a, uh, correctly, and I'll just, there's not a, an amendment, so this is just the, um, the base uh, motion to approve the charter, so if you want to amend, you know, please feel free to craft a, an amended, um, statement. No, I'm fine.
Go ahead, Brian.
Andrew, I understand your concern with that, I think the, the, and, you know, if we need a motion on it, we can do that. I think the concern with it is the solicit feedback on behalf of the committee, and I think people, if they're on the committee, will still be able to solicit feedback on their own, but not speaking for the committee, just like, I don't speak for the school board, the, the president speaks for the board. I think committee members cannot go and solicit feedback on behalf of the committee, they can encourage people to fill it out, I, I suspect that we're going to encourage everyone to fill it out, and we're going to use groups that aren't necessarily on the committee and to encourage completing the survey as well, so I don't know if that addresses your concern with it, Andrew, or not, but that's the way I read it.
It, it might, but it seems to me that sentence bars going out and talking to another community group.
Ah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That is, that is soliciting feedback on be- So, the, the, are we talking about just the technicality of saying, I'm going to XYZ group, and please give me feedback officially to be presented to the committee versus I'm on the committee, please give me feedback?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know that, I don't know that, I'll, I'll drop it, but I don't, I don't think that's clear, but I think it can be made clear in the done fine.
Okay.
I do, I do think, though, I don't care how well the survey is done, the primacy of the survey, I mean, unless we're gonna do a full-blown, big-time statistically validated thing, which would cost way much more money than is invested in this, um, I think the, the survey has to be considered an important piece of data, but the feedback coming into the community, whether people participate formally in front of a microphone at that time or not, because there are all sorts of factors that lead to participation in surveys being disproportionate, uh, especially in open forums being disproportionate, right? So there's, but I will, I don't feel the need, I guess, now that this has been said, I don't feel the need to make an amendment to, to strike that line.
Okay, Laura. I just want to say, I think we have to make every effort to, um, reach the community to get this input, because surveys, I mean, we have, we have literacy issues in our community, we have technological divide, we have a whole host of reasons that people may not do a survey, and so that's why I think the, the having people in the, um, the advisory committee is so important, and what other ways there may be to, um, maybe paper surveys, things going out, but we have to get the engagement and feedback beyond just who's willing to do that, and I think, I think we are all committed to that.
Yeah. Brian.
I'd like to offer a motion, um, on line seventeen, where it says both the demog- and the geography of the district are recent, and I would also like that membership, um, let me clean this up, I'm sorry. I'd like to add at the end of line seventeen and reside within the Green Bay area public school district.
Second.
Do you want to speak to it?
I think it's a key part that we have Green Bay area public school district residents involved in this and serving in our committee.
Okay. Anybody else? Andrew.
Yep, this one, this one, I, has a different purpose, I think it has to be a hundred, not, not seventy-five.
Okay. All right. Brian.
As a board, we allow opportunities for concerned residents of the state of the country to make their points be heard, and we take them into consideration, I think that the same thing with members of this advisory committee, we'll be able to hear from residents throughout the area, but like I said, I think it needs to definitely be members of our district.
Anybody else? Lynn.
For this advisory committee, I agree with you.
I agree too, so, anybody else want to speak to it? Okay. Um, are we ready to take a vote, Kinsey? Got it? Okay.
Gerlach. Yay. Mills.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Leighton Warren.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Brian, oh, I'm sorry, I, 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 go ahead, Andrew.
Um, I would like to move an amendment that, um, added to line seventeen. Wait, are we? Are we still waiting to put the, have we passed the amendment, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, did we do it on line seventeen?
It's just not.
It's not there yet.
Just need a refresh.
Do you want to go ahead and speak to your amendment?
So, I want to add to where we just put, uh, must be residents of the district. Um, I'd like to add, at least, at least two members shall be, uh, shall be GB APS students.
Second.
Do you want to speak to that, Andrew?
Yeah, uh, adding to the amendment we've, a- after the amendment we just did, um, at least two members shall be GB APS students.
So, uh, an amendment and a second.
Be sec- oh, sorry, second.
All right, anyone, anyone else want to talk to that? Speak to that, I should say? All right, I think we can, um, are we ready to vote on that?
Go ahead, Vida. Does it need to be clarified, like, high school students, should that be, does that have to be clarified in the amendment, or is it, like, assumed? Um, or do we not just want high school students?
Uh, I think high school students would be appropriate.
I, I'm fine leaving it without high school students, if you got a really sharp middle school student, that really shows an interest, I mean, it still has to be approved by the board, and a motion I'm gonna have by the designee, so I think it'll, by default, I'm against adding high school student, but I think by default, it will come up that way.
Andrew.
I mean, it, it comes to mind that the, one of the people who had the greatest initial push in shaping the dress code debate actually was a middle school student when she started that effort, so, but I think in practice, it's ninety percent or more chance it'll just naturally sort out to be high school students.
Okay. If only for transportation, things like that. Are we set, or no?
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody else want to make changes? No, we need to vote on this, so, go ahead, Kinsey.
Becker.
Aye.
Leighton Warren.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Nay.
Mills.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Okay. All right, uh, Brian.
I move that online, I'm sorry, online, previously thirty-four, where it says include the president of the board, I'd like to add or delegate board, designate board member.
Second. Do you want to speak to it?
Pretty much the same thing I said before. Pretty much the same thing I said before.
Change.
Can I add a friendly to add the word thereof afterwards? That makes it more precise of who's doing the delegating.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. A friendly.
I did a friendly after I seconded.
Alright, so we don't have to vote on the friendly. No, but we do have to vote on, on the, okay, so does anyone else want to speak to that? Because I think we're ready to vote. Okay, Kinsey. McCoy.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Layton and Warren.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Alright, any other modifications, changes, amendments? Go ahead, Laura.
I don't really have an amendment, but I just wanted to get everybody, maybe some input on three B experience on a decision-making or advisory committee. That's always kind of struck me as sort of elitist. So I mean, that's strong, but I, I know we want people that are able to make and contribute positively, but I don't know that that's a requirement, and I understand we want somebody that's able to work on a team and a committee, you know, I just don't know if there's a different term or something. I mean, I can live with this, but I just feel like I don't want to exclude somebody because they haven't been able formally be on a team that's making decisions. And advisory committees are usually, you know, those aren't just like you easily get on and you can still be community involved. So I just want to get the thoughts of the board.
Okay.
Like to make a motion that we strike item three B and then re-letter appropriately after.
Second.
I'll go ahead and speak on it. With the second, yeah, I think you're absolutely right. I don't think we need to have it in there. I understand the intent of it, but this is an opportunity for people to gain experience and expertise and share their views on it. So I noticed that before and I'm glad that you caught it.
Andrew.
And again, in, in practice, I, I do support striking it. In practice, the, the process will not result in sixteen members, none of whom have been on a committee before. But it probably quite possibly could be beneficial, again, especially, especially if we're hearing from groups that have said that they didn't feel represented and whatever reaching out happened, you know, didn't, it would be harder, it's harder to get people from groups that maybe have not had as much representation, if you say they're has to, in practice, a majority will have had some before, I'm sure.
Okay. Um, I think we're ready to vote on that, Kinsey. Mills.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Layton and Warren.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Alright, any, go ahead, Brian.
I just wanted to mention the reason I have no desire to make this a split committee with one-year terms is because we have an end date, so.
Alright, anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this. Just before we take the vote, thank you, everybody, for your consistent and persistent work on this and thoughtful input, and I just really want to take a moment to say thank you. So go ahead, Kinsey. Welch.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Layton and Warren.
Aye.
Lyerly.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Gerlach.
Aye.
Mills.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda. Does anyone need a break? Do we need a three-minute break? Like, very brief, okay? So let's keep it brief. Going to take a quick break here. Okay, we're back. Is everybody here? Yeah. Okay. Oh. Where, where is he? Okay, he's coming. Alright, the next is G consolidation of Tank Elementary School boundaries and Lincoln Elementary School boundaries. I think Dr. Tiller and Vicki are going to be speaking to this. Oh, okay, so someone read the motion, please.
I move that effective July one, twenty twenty-four, the attendance area of Tank Elementary School shall be consolidated into the Lincoln Elementary School attendance area, and that students residing in the affected boundary shall attend Lincoln Elementary School, except under the established waiver conditions and procedures.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to talk to it or speak to it, or anybody on staff want to speak to this, or do we need staff to speak to it? Okay. Alright, Andrew.
Uh, Dr. Tiller, I'd like to hear more about what you encountered with the family meetings. I know that it sounds like, it sounds like Steph was, it sounds like Steph was relatively supportive, and I know some staff there, but I need to know more about where, you know, where families are at with this.
Uh, thank you. So as, when we met with the families, we had a few families that were a little bit concerned. But once we talked them through, we had about roughly about two families that was concerned about the process and how it was gonna go. We ensured them that the staff from Tank, that they had taught summer school in the Lincoln building, so they were ecstatic about moving to a newer building. They was concerned, the families was concerned about change. And we assured them that this would be a better move for their students, and they were pretty much okay with it, but they still had a little challenge with change.
Well, so there's challenge with change for changes sake is, is one thing, right? But we have you know, we have the accessibility of events in the community, we have kids who will now bus instead of of walk, I, I believe probably all of them, because there's probably, or almost all of them, because there's a hazard area, I would think likely, right, Josh? Yep, so, so they'll all bus now, and so that's like, it's not just I wish my building wasn't merging, right? It's, and, and we're gonna have to, right, but did that come up as a concern?
That per se did not come, transportation did not come up as a concern, no. It was more concerned about services moving forward.
Okay, there was fear that services would be lost going to a bigger school and people were able to be assured and we're assured here that it's going to be, going to be the same. Some, some of those cases where we might have it like an ideal situation be a group of three students working with a certain specialist, but it's only been able to be one at Tank, because there's only one of, of these, these kinds of things.
Exactly. They will get greater services, more consistent staffing, and they will, more specials enable the district to have more consolidated services for them. Exactly correct.
Brian.
When I'm looking at the summary of this, I just want to stress second last bullet point on here says, if the board approves its recommendation, the administration would investigate a new location from Manoka Hill. That's the task force recommendation moves Manoka to Lincoln. So this is just approving the first part, not necessarily the second part. It's just giving us that opportunity to keep the process moving on.
Exactly.
And with motion, it talks about the waiver process, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong tab. Established waiver conditions and procedures, I'm assuming that means just our general board policy on that if you would like to intra-district transfer, there's a set, setup for this, just as any other student, if you are in Preville's district, you're able to go to east as long as you follow the procedure. The same thing would happen, so there's nothing specific on that gauge towards the families are impacted by this, it's just the general board policy.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, any, go ahead, Andrew.
So I'm, I still have some concerns about a, a couple of things. I, I did, I did vote yes on we, we act, because I, I think that we saw maybe some movement in opinion when, once we were able to, on some, Dr. Tiller specifically was able to communicate that the environmental emphasis would stay. I, I think that helped out a lot in changing some, but not all minds there, to the point where there was some, some general, you know, some general buy-in here, but I, I do think it's at least worthy of discussion, how much time, even though it would mean saving less money, how much time is fair just from the human perspective to students to say your school is, is getting moved. We, we, we did that before the beginning of the year. I think I think we're on the bubble here, and there might be something different about it for Tank versus for Keller. But I'm also torn on the idea of I, I also am concerned about the idea of having to vote yes on one and no on the other as well. And the other, the, I guess the other things I'm looking at, I'm concerned about, I would really like to have a firm, a firm decision made committing to close this building before we start closing schools. I think the public, the public deserves that commitment, and it's quite, it is at least possible that we could vote yes to start closing buildings and, and leave this, leave DOB intact without splitting it up. Although I see the problem with postponing this, leaving the people waiting longer in order to be able to do the DOB piece at the, you know, the same time. So I, I still, I guess I'm interested in some more thoughts on the, I guess just from the human side, or is this giving, giving not a full school year to, you know, prepare that transition?
So let me speak to that. The Tank currently has a hundred and eleven students. The staff there is at forty-four percent capacity, so they are prepared. We prepared them, it's October. It's only minus a month that we, in my, in professional opinion, we're consolidating services, they have more services. Seems like win-win. The population for, there for demographic-wise, we have fifteen point two percent black students, Tank has nineteen point three combined, it'd be consolidated sixteen point eight Hispanic population, Lincoln has thirty point nine. Tank has thirty-five point one, total thirty-two point five percent, so it was around, around the same demographics with the Asian and African. So everything is almost the same as they move. Plus they're getting better services. For example, Tank currently has one ESL student for twenty-five students. The consolidation will bring two ESL students over, which is a great opportunity to collaborate. It's only a one-track ESL there, one-track, only one teacher, so it's just a win-win situation. And it's, we talk about the teach, I mean, the students are very resilient, they're like rubber bands. It's the don't, and, and is a big point to bring out that this has to be student-driven. If the students were saying to their teachers, I don't want to move, I don't, they're a little bit different. Students are kind of ready to move. The building was built in nineteen thirty-nine, so it's outdated and it's a lot of things to do. We want to move students in a better situation.
Brian.
Andrew, I understand your concern on this. Looking at this, I'm also assuming that twenty percent of that would be fifth graders that would be moving on to middle school, so that knocks the number down to eighty-five-ish on there. Many years ago, when I taught in Green Bay, the transit, the transitory population, I think the turnover at my building was thirty percent throughout the school year. I have no idea what the updated numbers on that with housing insecurity, unfortunately, I'm sure it's higher than that. So taking that student base, fully understanding the concern on this, I think this puts us towards what I've stated many times is my goal of a once-in-a-generation opportunity to really fix concerns with this, and when we look at this is the first, second domino to move into it, this gives us an opportunity to look at making sure that we have students in consistent buildings throughout, because they have a large geographic footprint. It gives us an opportunity to consolidate services, as Dr. Tiller was mentioning, and provide stronger services for students in there, so. I think the more that we look at dates, and I fully empathize with what you're saying, Andrew, the longer this takes. And we can't just kick it down the road, and I, fully recognizing what you're saying with it, Andrew, an October date I feel is very close to a September date. We need to start making our decisions on these, because I, in April, there could be new board members on here, then do we reset the whole process to onboard them and figure out what the process is? So I get what you're saying, Andrew, but I think we look at it case by case, how close it is to the end of the school year, I think we're fine.
Anybody? Andrew.
If if interested, I'd like to hear your opinion, Nancy, because you spoke, you were one of the ones that spoke up last time about asking for the delay on Tank.
The reason I asked for the delay on Tank is because I did not think that Tank would fit into Fort Howard at all. You know, having volunteered there, I I thought this can't happen. And then he looked further into it and they said, yes, it can't happen. But I've I did substitute teaching at at Lincoln, and I was a teacher at Tank. And I think it's it's a really good move. I do.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, then we I think are ready to take this vote. Kenzie?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. We're going to move on in the agenda. H is modify the referendum question resolution to consider additional options to utilize existing space at West High School. Could someone read the motion, please?
A move that the revised referendum question resolution as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. In discussion and questions. Good, James.
I agree with motion. My concern is in discussing the Advisory Committee Charter with Cooperative Strategies. The alternatives, I think they would appreciate understanding what alternatives they would like. You would like the committee to consider be available before the first committee meeting of December twelfth is if I recalling the conversation, Josh correctly. So, you know, I appreciate it, but it's a tight window to determine what you want them to consider.
Okay, anybody else? Andrew, I think was next, and then Brian.
Yes, I have. I have an amendment. I would like to make a motion to strike and reletter as appropriate item C Roman numeral two. Strike create a distinct educational environment for the John Dewey Academy of Learning Charter School.
I'll second.
Andrew.
Yeah, I I've spoken about it before. It's one of my strongest positions. There are students who thrive at at JDL because because of its because of its size and because of its being a self centered a self centered location. A building that once was not a school has been made into a into a great school space that works for them. And the no matter what you did, no matter how much you separated entrances and everything, it just is not. It's not the same. There are people that I know who absolutely would not have graduated if it if it wasn't for Dewey. And and there are people I know personally who may have had outcomes more serious than not graduating without without Dewey. And it's not because of project based learning, although they did well with project based learning. It is because of the the things like, as the representative said earlier, that, you know, the community, the community circle and the things you can do in that environment. We've invested in the building. The building works for them. They're happy with the building. And it's a debate that we had and came to the same conclusion in twenty seventeen that that was not the way to to do it for West. With number two stricken, we still have DOB, part of DOB moving into West as an option to be considered. And we have a fairly wide exploration of other options for West, too.
Right.
I agree with what Andrew's saying on this. I think the fact that we have Dewey as a choice school and a whole different approach to it and removing the peer pressure that could happen in a traditional high school with the students and and the students being successful in there. I'm not against the possibility of moving Dewey at some point, but I believe that this ties us to that decision on it. I I agree, Andrew. I think that where they have the situation set, the building set up, it's it's providing opportunities for our students, just like we do at NEW out of NWTC and our other buildings, but some of them, so.
Nancy. I don't know where I got this, but I I thought at one time we were talking about possibly adding grades to West High School, like maybe a seven twelve IB program, and and that's not listed here, so.
That's covered as the alternatives that they want to explore. But to your point, the committee will receive alternatives from the board. So sometime between now and that first committee meeting, that needs to be crystallized, and we need to be able to provide that directive.
Anybody else? Brian?
Speaking on the motion, I still would like to see Green Bay West utilized in a full capacity in some manner. I just don't think that Dewey is the proper fit there.
James.
I don't know, and I don't know that leaving it in means that we're going to do it. It gives us optionality. And when we look at others, we have NEW that's co located with NWTC and is a thriving program, and it's a unique population. So again, I'm struck by the fact that we we have made a determination that if something being bad without having done the appropriate exploratory activities to determine yes or no, it's going to be bad. So I personally don't see a reason why to remove before we even do the investigation because it may be much less expensive because to relocate John Dewey versus district office into West regarding security, access to the public, things like that. So I I just don't think it's responsible that at the beginning of a process to start limiting ourselves.
Andrew.
We had the process in in twenty seventeen when we decided whether or not to authorize two point three million dollars to remodel the building to be Dewey. I I I wish I I'm I'm disappointed that what I'm I'm not able to convey the weight of the importance of this. And if if some people are gonna vote no, then I guess you're gonna vote no. But it it doesn't matter even if it's good. Even if it's good, people will people will leave or people will not sign up for it because the whole point is the big school feel that makes this makes this unique. And and the people, the 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 people who didn't get a chance to benefit from it because they didn't feel like West was an option being they end up leaving the district, dropping out, homeschooling, ending up being online only, well, it's not their their first choice. It's just, it it's very clear to me that Dewey needs to be different. And I have substantial experience with people who have gone gone through it and succeeded because of it and probably would never have gone to it if it wasn't if it was seen as part of a large high school. That that is its uniqueness, and that's why we spent the money in twenty seventeen to to do it there.
Go ahead, Lynn. I don't know if it's okay to ask whether there's anyone on the staff. I've never been into John Dewey Academy. Is there anyone on the staff who's knowledgeable about it? Who can give us any advice tonight?
I don't think there's anyone on the staff at John Dewey who's here. Just staff.
I mean, on our on our administrative staff who is who knows the building and who has any any advice.
I I don't know that there's anybody who can speak to it tonight, so go ahead, Brian.
As a board member that's participated in events at John Dewey Academy, the physical layout allows students to learn in a different manner that have chosen to go into that. And it it helps them not necessarily feel the pressures. And I'm talking peer pressures and learning environments at a typical high school. That's one of the strengths of it is a special education teacher that works with students in alternative settings. I think it's a key component of it of why it's successful, why we're probably, I believe, we're at capacity for it. When I was looking at it for a student, I was told we were at capacity for it. And in regards to where this motion goes, it is carved out to say item to create a distinct educational environment for John Dewey Academy of Learning at Charter School. It could still be explored under part three, which would become to explore other options. I think it's very specific with the wording of John Dewey on there. That's why I'm voting or I'm supporting Andrew's motion to have it stricken.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I I appreciate the input of an experienced special ed teacher. I think that really helps me. I'll just share with you something I told Andrew before the meeting. A young woman who is a substitute teacher that I here in Green Bay that I very much admire, but she doesn't have a teaching background. And she contacted me the other day and was so excited. She said, I substituted at John Dewey Academy. Oh, my gosh, is that ever an interesting building? They really make such good use of the space. And it was so and and I said, wait a minute, we're thinking of closing that building and moving them out of there. It was never built to be a school. And she said, oh, my gosh, they make such good use of that space. And I I kind of saw a parallel between that and the Da Vinci Building. Remember how we were told, well, some of those rooms are too small and it has these architectural problems and et cetera. And they were making such good use of the space. And now when Brian says this, you know, as a a special ed teacher, and after I hear her, you know, someone who had, she just was giving me an off the cuff response, I I think I could support striking this.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to strike tubes C two. Go ahead, Laura.
I guess a couple, trying to be equitable through all of this and thoughtful. Do we know, is there a number amount like we had with Weekyak? And if Andrew and Brian would be willing to share how this is different than the Weekyak unique curriculum, you know, I'd like I'd really like to hear that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so we we had an additional and an additional piece being the environmental program. But it was it was the it's the regular curriculum delivered in the regular way with an extra element with the you know, with the outdoor stuff, with the environmental stuff there, and that is able to move with it to to Red Smith. Here, we very intentionally gave it its own space and spent the money to do it in a referendum because I think it is it's more central to what the program has become. Could you stick a could you stick a project based learning section into into part of West and give it a door? It you could. But all the things we've done to have flexibly available space that's conducive to project based learning and that, you know, that environment is, I I think, if you look at, you know, Weekyak is is small, but they weren't. They didn't have, for example, a community circle or as an integral part of the experience, right? They had, it was much more. You would have, you know, and Webster's Integrated Arts. Yes, there is more of an arts focus in a traditional elementary school, just like in Weekyak. There was added environmental focus in a traditional elementary school. And that is just, that's what is unique, I think, and and different here. It has, it has evolved to be about project learn, project based learning and the sense of of community. And I think JDL families would would tell you that.
Go ahead, Brian.
The the programming is significantly different for the students, and that's what Andrew was saying with it. I would not be against the possibility of at some point looking at Dewey going into a different building that is unique from other building. I I don't mean unique like the office setup, which is a key part of it. I mean physically separated from a different high school because the peer pressure and the student interaction may not be as conducive for these students to be successful. I don't want to say they're sheltered, but they're sheltered. They're they're able to not have that as a key part of it. The programming is my number one concern with it. The physical separation from other traditional high schools is the other key part of it. I understand Andrew's concern, and I support him on that as far as the physical space of Dewey. I get it. If we have another building open up in some capacity and we had to shuffle, I would be conducive to that. But keeping it separate from another physical high school is a key concern of mine.
Okay.
Sure, if that if at some point in the future, there was perhaps a place where that made sense and we involved the Dewey community and hey, this is this is would be a good idea to have this building in a good location hypothetically be composed of Dewey and some a department of DOB. That would be a whole, a whole different story, but it it needs to be its unique space. And and regards to it regards to whether it's it's sheltered, there's people who will choose it because it's that type of environment. And there were, there would be people who absolutely would not choose it for that reason, and that's that's okay, too. I took, I took my son Noah to tour it because I thought, wow, Dewey might be might be perfect. And we went for breakfast after tour in the morning, and he said, I think it was what what must have been. I don't know if the grades have changed at all since that we've added grades. But what he said to me afterwards immediately, this looks like a a great place for other for some other kids to go, and I totally get it. And I want to do regulars for me. So great, so there's not room for everybody to go there anyway. So I think it's, yeah, it is. It's integral to the program that it that it be not in another high school, but certainly a future could exist where perhaps it would share a space with something that's not a not a traditional high school.
Nancy, did you have something? No, okay. Anybody else? Um. Okay, we can, what is the, can you read the motion? Okay. And we have a second, so I think we're ready to vote on this, so. Kenzie? Melz?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Nay.
Lierly?
Nay.
McCoy?
Nay.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Motion carries four to three. Okay. All right. I think that's that's a first for us, I think.
Maybe this particular split.
Not in recent memory. Yeah, so. Um, okay, we still have to vote on this. We still have to vote on this motion, so Brian.
So I have a question with the entire motion on here. Does this eliminate or would it be proposed as a separate question, anything dealing with Washington, Webster? The possibility, looking at options there. The possibility, you, looking at options there.
Uh, no, this is specific to the referendum question resolution. So that's in the K eight resolution. So it doesn't speak to that. Any capital investment that is required would be a separate referendum question.
So that gives us the possibility of still presenting a question of looking at what we're doing at Washington or Webster and ideas that have been floated before and brought up. So.
All right. All right. I think we're ready to vote. Kenzie? Welch?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next is, um, consolidation of Keller Elementary School boundaries into Kennedy Elementary School boundaries. Would someone please read the motion?
Move that effective July first, 2024, the attendance area for Keller Elementary School shall be consolidated into the Kennedy Elementary School attendance area. And that residents, I'm sorry, students residing in the affected boundaries shall attend Kennedy Elementary School, except under established waiver conditions and procedures.
I got a second.
Second.
Okay. All right. Um, see, we want to speak to this. Did you have anything to add? No. All right. We've had a couple of weeks to ponder this and to read the, the memo and, and take this in. So, um, anybody? Andrew?
Yes, um, same question, Dr. Tiller, on the, the family meetings.
So the family meetings here was a little bit different. It was a little bit more emotional uh, from the parents, um, because mainly they thought they had two to four years before this, uh, happened. It was under the impression that they had a little bit more time uh, before we moved on then, before we presented. So it was a little bit more emotional with this group of parents than it was the former group of parents.
Anybody? Andrew?
Yeah, this one, I, I guess the, this one is, is harder for me to, um, support right now. Now we had, you know, we had, um, you know, we, it's, it's, um, it's one email, but we had a, a community member who was bringing up some concerns about, um, you know, maybe not enough people knew the speed, which this was coming down the pipe until they were invited to this meeting at the, the last minute. Uh, or not the last minute, late, late in the process. Um, I think there is a human, there is a human side to this that is much stronger when you have families that are not as comfortable with the move, even if we have done a, uh, helped them, you know, adjust, adjust to it. Um, I also, I also think something that is unexplored with, with Keller is if it is not in use right now, could that, could that host, uh, could that host a, um, you know, could that be half Keller remaining a neighborhood school and half a department of DOB hypothetically, but we're not talking about that till, you know, till next month. And so I think this, I think this is different. I think Keller widely expected to move, um, when a new, when a new school is constructed. So I'm, I'm not as comfortable with the human piece of this of, of doing this move now. It also doesn't mean I would be a no until, I know, all the way until a new school is built. I'm not saying it, but again, tank had seemed, there seemed to be enough positive momentum that people were more united behind the tank move. Once it became to Lincoln, then families are, are feeling it here. So maybe there's one, which in the end is why I could in a close call, support doing one of these on October 23rd and probably can't support the, the other on this notice.
Nancy. I think we have to start doing some things. And now if we've taken off, um, the possibility of, um, John Dewey, and then we're going to stop this, I, I feel, I, I think Dr. Tiller, they, they came around in the end, didn't they?
Yes, they, they came around even still, we still have a few emails, but I did explain to them as a superintendent that I, I would be, I would be remiss if they didn't feel passionate about their individual kid. But I have to make decisions based upon 19,500 kids. And I would not move their kids to anything that was worse than what they were going to, which is critical and which is key. And they understood that when they had 44% capacity.
Go ahead then.
Um, for what it's worth, I'd like to share my experience with school closures. In 1989, I signed a contract to teach at St. Joseph Academy. It was a hundred years old and had been a girls, half a girl's school for a hundred years. It was one block from my house. I was very disappointed that they could only give me a half-time contract. But I thought, well, that's okay. I'll get my foot in the door and then I'll teach there because finally, after all that moving around the country, I was going to get to stay in the same school forever. That was in August. In November, we were all called to the auditorium or the gym. I can't remember what it was. And, um, sister told us that the school would be closing at the end of the year. On the same day, at the same moment, Father Dane Rodecky told the, uh, boys at Premontray that their school would be closing. My son was one of them. And, uh, the, uh, principal at Abbott Pennings told their boys that their school would be closing. All three schools closed successfully by the end of the year. And in late August of 1990, I walked into Notre Dame Academy and started teaching there on the first day. And it was not perfect. I didn't have a classroom. I hung out in a closet. Um, but it was okay. And we all worked together and look where Notre Dame Academy is now. And St. Joseph Academy now is Aldo Leopold School. So I know that, um, it seems like this is sudden and how can we do this by the end of the year? Some of my colleagues had gone to school there. They, it was the only high school they had ever gone to and taught in. There were suicide watches on the day we got our letter from Father Rodecky telling us whether or not we were going to have a job. There was, there was so much pain and heartache. I think it was a whole lot harder than this. And so I would just ask you to, you know, put it in perspective and know that hard things happen. And, um, well, I, I've been through it and it worked out just fine.
Okay, Andrew and then Brian.
Um, so that's not honestly very inspiring as far as the transition piece of things, although yes, I know that things, for those who stayed, um, for those who stayed, I know that they were happy with Notre Dame. My student taught at, um, Notre Dame uh, for one, uh, half of my, my time. Um, but there is something very, there is something very different there. There are probable that I, there's with enough people. Certainly some families made a choice to, to, to leave. I mean, maybe the majority probably went to Notre Dame. Maybe a overwhelming majority went to Notre Dame, but some probably said, no, thanks. They wanted, if, if I'm not going to get the, uh, all boys or all girls school, I'm, and I'm going to have to pay for it anyways. I'm sure some went back to the, the public schools, but in that situation, right? We're dealing with people who, people who had a choice. And again, I'm, I'm not, I think there, I think we've not exhausted the possibility of what, could we put something else into Keller? Could we put part of DOB into, into Keller? Um, I'm just, you know, with my self-imposed rule, I have to be 85% okay with it. I, I guess I was, I was 86% on the, the last one and I'm not, I'm not close tonight. I'm not close to that. If I had a chance, if I had the chance to have a resolution passed to close DOB first and show that we were going to be save, where we're going to be saving money besides closing schools before we close schools. But that's not where we're at. So, so I'm, I'm a no on this one.
Right.
Glad that we previously approved policy that would help ensure that our employees were still confident where they were going. And I believe that we are still hoping to have the staff members track to the schools that they were at as well as other employment and opportunities within a district of 19,000 students. Um, Andrew, I, I understand your concern on this. I think this same thing where it's going to be, we've got tough decisions we've got to make on these and I, I fully support your decision on your stance on making sure that we're looking into the district office building. I think that this is one that's going to provide our students the best opportunities and make the schools better within the last, you know, within our generation. So.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just want to state for, to the board and, and to the public, the team that we have worked tirelessly in hours and hours. We just don't come up and say, let's do this, let's do this. Uh, Josh, Vicky, uh, myself, uh, Angie, uh, Lori, we sit and we work hours on hours on hours and just plan what's the best situation for kids. We look at the demographics, uh, which is very critical. We make sure that demographics match as close to be possible. We look at the transportation piece. So it's a lot of man hours that goes into this. I mean, hours, we stay here nights. In the DOB piece, we're going to bring that forward. You'll see, we would like also the, for the board members to come take a tour prior, before we present the monies about moving DOB. So you can see what goes into DOB publicly is a lot that transpires. We have the paint system. I can go on all that, but I won't. There's a lot that goes into DOB. You just can't facelift and up move sections of DOB because of continuity that has to happen. So it's a lot that goes into this. And I'm just want to say I'm proud of my staff for coming up with this and everything will look and be better for the kids guaranteed though. I wouldn't be sitting in this seat.
Andrew.
Okay, so I promise that if I, if I ever been, you can look at, there's old videos of, of this, if you need to see it. If, if I ever, if I was ever in a position where I thought that the administration was not working a hundred percent for kids, I would be doing a lot, a lot more than a fairly quiet no vote. That's going to be six to one on, on one of the moves. Um, Keller's going to move and it's just a difference of opinion on the, the win. Is it going to move into a place that I'm, I'm confident will be a good place for them when they move? Yes. Otherwise I would be filibustering this. I would be making much shorter statements. I would be out on social media. I, but I'm not. I'm, I do think that there's, there's enough questions to, to suggest, could we do, you know, could we do something else here? I, and in the end, I would be willing to forego the savings for, of money for a year. In this case, because it's not as, as clear cut, knowing that, yes, no, I, I don't think, I don't think it's an automatic wait until the new school, you're not moving until the new school is built. That's not my stance on it. My stance is about, about this year. So.
All right. Think we're ready to vote. Go ahead Laura.
Keller is currently at what percent capacity?
Forty-four percent.
And there's no anticipation of exponential growth on the west side, you know, that's going to, that's not going to change that. And so I absolutely hear what you're, I hear what you're saying. Andrew is just delaying it a little bit, but I, I, I'm going to support this as well, unfortunately.
All right. Okay, so another tough one. So, go ahead, Kenzie. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, no. McCoy, yes. Layton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills, yes. Gerlach, yes. The motion carries six to one. Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Before we move on to this, is there a way, um, that we can see the number of students that have left certain schools throughout the school year, just the percentage of transient population within there? And is there a way that we can find out what school they went to? My question for this is, I suspect there's a significant number of students that may have moved within our Green Bay school district from one school to the other. Um, and it would just be interesting to see a report with that.
Absolutely. We can have that for you.
Okay. All right. All right. We're going to, um, move on to Jay. I think Melissa, are you? Sorry.
Can we make a motion to consolidate, uh, items Jay through Kim?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Um, I, I'm not sure what that would sound like. So can someone offer a?
I think he did it and I seconded it.
Okay.
And now they're, now they're combined.
Okay. So can we just go ahead and take a vote? I think Melissa would be happy about that. All right. Um, I, I, are we just going to do a voice vote then, Kenzie? All right, go ahead. Becker?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Um, is that, is that? We're, are we done then? Oh, yes. Um, this is where, uh, Lynn Gerlach's expertise. We're going, I'm going to adjourn into closed session.
I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, section one A and F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit, for the purpose of considering students' admissions pursuant to Wisconsin statute 120.13, sections one F and two.
So second?
Second.
Um, all, all in favor? Nope. Got to take a voice. Go ahead, Kenzie. Or Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Layton and Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned into closed session.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.